Okay councillors, it is now two thirty, I declare the meeting open. I'd like to acknowledge the country. Councillors, I'd like to acknowledge the judicial custodians of the land where we work. And let the council celebrate the diversity of average and levels. And the ongoing cultures and connections to the land and waters of the New South Wales Central Tablelands. Thank you, Julian, could you do the rest of the recording for the reading please?
Members of the public are advised that the proceedings of this meeting, other than any confidential matters, will be recorded and made publicly available on the council website. And persons attending the meeting should refrain from making any defermentary statements.
Thank you. And I can, Julian, imagine we've got any apologies?
Can I put it for someone?
For Fries delight.
Yep.
I'm expected to attend, but it's.
Four, that's good, thank you. Then we'll just acknowledge once he walks in. Confirmation minutes of your already made up of Craig County Council, hello, fifty, October twenty twenty one. Councillor Leslie.
Second amendment.
Well, sorry, yep.
Two amendments. The chief of weed by security officer Chris Jackson wasn't in attendance. However, the previous general manager, David Gett, was in attendance, it was noted, so just to correct those two. It's staff.
Thank you. If I accept it to that, thank you. County chairman's report. Sorry. Just to raise your interest, can I move the second councillors? Councillor Reynolds, councillor McKibben, councillor Cable. All four, means Carrie, thank you. Okay. Oh, George just noted councillor Frye's coming in at two thirty three. Just watch that. Okay, item one, oh sorry councillor Frye, you got your, you turned it on? Okay, item one, statutory annual report of the year twenty 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 one, we recommend that, councillor Reynolds. Councillor. Kingham, any questions councillors?
Do you have any questions?
Here. Member McKibben, yep, yes.
Did you have a reading? I don't know if I have a reading.
Yeah.
Just some questions.
That they were just doing mixed up in here.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll just.
Just go straight up please.
Yeah. So the first question there, I believe.
That was appendix one.
Yes, depending on annual report, that the local control, that we has a local control authority, how many directions were given to government agencies?
Yes.
So I can say four were given to Transport for New South Wales and now to forestry. And I consider that because forestry, they work really well with us and have developed some plans and have got an MOU now with us to do their roadside along with our own roadside program.
So, so my comment was really to say, do we need to say that in the annual report? Because it's a bit vague. We've said that we're the first organisation to issue them to. But I just wondered whether we needed to be a little bit more specific there.
And specifically in the state that we have a strong relationship rather than the number of maybe pins or whatever placed on it. We are working closely to solve the issues of weed management. Is it more a confirmation of that? Councillor Leslie?
We don't pick out other individuals or organisations to comment when they've been treated as this way. I see no reason why with forestry and what was the other one?
Forest.
Forests, just for me, so, so.
Any other comment councillors?
I think, I don't know, I don't, I don't know that we pick them out individually, but maybe we just say that four have been issued to public authorities, I'm quite happy with that. And that we're working closely with public authorities to ensure that they make their biosecurity obligations. But just, it was quite, it was just a little bit vague, I thought, I'm happy if people believe it, it stays as it is. What page was that? Row number two? I think it was under the summary, wasn't it?
Look, councillors would be so happy, maybe, to be conscious of that. If I go through it later and we can make it, but clarify, maybe.
We said recently councillor gave the first and only known LCA. Gave the first and only known LCA given, that didn't quite make sense, the wording of the sentence. This is halfway down page eight of appendix one. First intended paragraph. Says recently councillor gave the first and only known LCA given, but there's a problem with that sentence, given by a security direction in New South Wales. And then it says was issued for property owned by a public agency landholders and the only known LCA to give individual, so I think, has that been quoted from something?
That's in relation to general biosecurity direction? Not in relation to individual biosecurity directions issued on public land?
No, it's in relation to public agency landholders.
But it's a general biosecurity direction, that's a different thing altogether.
Yeah, so recently, but it should not say. Councillor has given the first and only known general biosecurity direction in New South Wales. So this was issued for to property owned by a public agency landholder. He doesn't talk, he's the only known LCA, which is the local control authority, I don't know if we defined that anywhere else, to give such a bias, individual biosecurity direction to a government agency, rather than we've named it Transport for New South Wales. But then I thought we were saying we've also issued four individual notices as well as a general one. Now, the MOU agreement, as I understand, is with the full constituency councils and New South Wales Forestry Corporation. Do we have an MOU with Transport for New South Wales? No.
We don't.
No, I know, that was only in relation to roads, yes. But I think we also, do we also need to mention that apart from roads, we have a strong relationship with forestry for that to do? And we had, didn't we issue, did we issue forestry a general direction?
Yeah.
So we haven't just issued one, we've issued one to Transport in New South Wales and other forestry.
So there's a difference between the general biosecurity direction and individual biosecurity direction. The general biosecurity direction was contested and it's about a general direction about road sides. And so forestry and councils have actually received that general biosecurity direction. Now, the individual biosecurity directions that we're specifically talking about are in relation to specific areas in which they must carry out specific duties.
Yes.
Under that individual biosecurity direction.
Okay.
So four were issued for the rail.
Yeah, so the first sentence there says recently councillor gave first, well, as I said, the words.
I think that instead of given after LCA should be issued. But I think councillor gave first, no, no, the LCA issued general biosecurity direction.
But that's a general biosecurity, not related to roads. The transport's not allowed, it's not allowed in the rail corridors.
No, general biosecurity direction is in relation to roads. So council, public is a public agency.
Yeah.
And so it's forestry.
So, but it issued it to Transport for New South Wales, it says.
And the only known LCA to give individual biosecurity directions to a government agency, correct?
Okay, so the general biosecurity direction was to the councils and to forestry.
Correct. And it was in relation to roads. If you like, I could send that.
No, 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 I just, I just think it needs explaining a bit better. I just don't think the two paragraphs explain themselves very well, that's my problem. Because I thought we had a, we have. If this is all in relation to roads. And it's not dealing with the road, I thought we'd issue, is it individual biosecurity directions in relation, I thought it was general ones in relation to corridor, the rail corridors, general individuals.
Because they failed their weed control notices. They failed the first, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
So that's why.
Individual biosecurity.
So that's why we, didn't we issue individual bio directions for those rail corridors?
Individual, yeah, or, or, yes, that's correct, yeah.
But maybe we need to just separate it out and say, Transport for New South Wales issued four directions in relation to rail corridors.
Yeah.
Explain it. In relation to roads, following applies. Issue the forestry corporation, issue the councils, and we have a general MOU carrying that.
You can't for that. And to break the two up showing that four. Can you just sort of give, read that out to the members and just give them an understanding of that's going to be the order of course?
Yeah, yeah, so probably not the datum, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So read something along the lines of recently councillor was the only known LCA, local control authority, to issue general bio, a general biosecurity direction for property owned by public agency landholders, and I could continue to say for road corridors. Like that, to make it more known about what that general biosecurity, yeah, a bit more specific.
Yeah.
And then I could separate it, make a different paragraph, end by the end, and put, and the only known LCA given for individual biosecurity directions to a government agency, Transport for New South Wales, after they failed to make their weed control requirements. Something like that.
Yeah, but I would actually put the bit about, I put, okay, so yes, I would put a bit about the rail right at the end of that, because the next paragraph then talks about the relationship and is also talking about public roads. So you should put the roads a bit together and then put the.
I see that.
The corridor. I, I had to say, I know I'm dim, but I was having a bit of trouble understanding those two in that paragraph.
That makes sense now.
Yeah, so we do the roads, and then we do the rail or the other.
Yep.
And, yeah, I feel, I think it works better.
Yeah, I understand that, so I'll separate that.
Yep. Other members, you understand that you said in that?
All of my other ones.
Oh, so yes, you did have another question.
I've got it here.
Hey Jake, who it is that we deal with specifically?
Yes, look, that might be something I'll comment on later, but just from my recent discussions with DPI, I found the upper echelons were didn't have a lot of knowledge, even Mr Charlton, who's on the weed committee, about UMCC activities.
Thank you, Julian, can you?
Yeah.
Until I read the briefing papers. Yeah, I, I didn't get the impression that they were that knowledgeable. I thought they would have been more knowledgeable.
Can you explain the relationship we've got, please, and who, who we deal with?
Yeah, so we deal with, I suppose, we deal with the operational level of these other government organisations. So the DPI, the LLS, National Products Transport. So, for example, a good example of this is when we deal with these other government organisations, we might send a individual biosecurity direction to the director, the secretary. But those correspondents or that correspondence doesn't necessarily be read, it just gets put down to the operational level or pushed, pushed through to the operational level. And they deal with us, I suppose, and they communicate with us on that operational level. And so, looking at the places like the British on Weeds Committee and who attends there, very operational. We don't get, we don't get the director general of the DPI tuning up to the regional weeds committee, we don't get those. So how they report up in their own organisations isn't necessarily.
But I got, I've actually got Charlton, who's been pretty familiar with these old weeds.
I find that interesting because I have actually located the minutes to one of the state weeds committee meetings and we are actually mentioned on, specifically up on the breakdown of council, is mentioned on their minutes.
And, and, well, he was, he may have been just being vague, but I, and I said it in my regi kid has actually given us an endorsement of this proposal, that we put up particularly on it. And he's said he fully supports it, and he's your chairman. And he acted.
I don't think that's it.
A light didn't go on for him either.
Don't believe that.
But we talked to start on DPM, like, you know, I just had to say, yes, what I hear we talk.
I just want a little, when you expect to be in my group, who's chairman of the central table, and tell us, yes, yes, I know all about it, I'm a proper county councillor, great work, you know, it's like, yeah, it seemed to be a bit like talking cheese. Maybe this child wasn't being particularly, I don't know.
I don't think that's.
Look, I also can give you an example, members, that I think there's probably a lot of councillors within our councils that don't know what up in Craig County Council does, because some councils don't, probably in the past, I've found, I don't think we carry on in the situation now, probably report much.
Right.
And don't know what goes on, so sometimes you find at least, yeah, the information doesn't always.
I'm having comments, I'm having comments there, I just made an observation, which may, my observation may have been off the line. It was probably from an analyst chat on the phone, I, and I may have got completely the wrong end of the stick because he may have known, he just wasn't.
forthcoming.
Forcome.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's all right, no, fair comment, but yeah, sometimes happens that things don't always filter to the level we pointed to or passed on.
And you have another on page eleven, a couple of questions. And I think I understand what it says now, the area of properties treated for weed infestation is three thousand three hundred hectares. The area of weed infestation treated for herbicide provided is four thousand five hundred. So does the three thousand three hundred include the four thousand five, is it included the four thousand five hundred? Or I, I think the second board plan to solve enough chemicals for four thousand five hundred hectares to be treated.
Yes.
So it would include the three thousand three hundred hectares.
Yeah, I, I saw clarification from the biosecurity operations manager before this.
Yep.
And discovered that they are two separate figures, so the four thousand five hundred relates to your camp sales, three thousand three hundred relates to your strain programs, in that.
So can we explain that?
Yeah.
Explain that, because I was scratching my head and my night was late at night, or early, early in morning, and I was thinking, I'm not quite getting this. Now, did we do, and please briefly, did we do one or two programmes, this is my, in twenty twenty one? We did do two in twenty twenty one, I thought, I can do it. Now, the outcome, only the head area outcomes of the community. It doesn't actually state, and I think this is crucial. Under outcomes of the community, what page do you want to, it's just about the end. Sorry, I just, I think one of the crucial things we need to say here is how many properties and the area at first inspection were classified as a three or a four high risk. And how many of those now are on the low risk, we've said how many, it doesn't, although it says how many end up being low risk and how many end up being higher risk at the end, it doesn't say how many we've actually converted by cajoling and influence and everything else from getting from a high risk first inspection, I don't think it says, does it? To a low risk, which I think is crucial to say how successful we've been coaxing people there. Maybe I've read it correctly, if you can, it's not true.
Thank you, Julian.
I think I now understand your question in relation to that, and I agree, I think we possibly could rephrase it to make it a bit clearer.
Well, I don't think it actually says it yet, because it's saying, all right, we've got this much high risk, this much higher risk. How much will we actually convert to low risk?
A comes close.
Yes.
But I don't think this is clear as we wanted it to be, and A refers to the past three years, not the past one, that's specific, I'm excuse you, so I understand, yeah, we could.
Because that's, that's really in part measure of our success that we have been able to, without having to be a cogent, but being firm, coax people into getting their properties under control.
I think all members would agree with that. No, thank you, Julian.
And also, I said, also with public authority corporations, it would be good to say, you know, how, and we don't have to mention specific public authorities, but, you know, how we converted some high risk areas to low risk. But they're rid of the measures of our success.
And you're talking, it is, and that sort of stuff, what we.
Yeah, yeah, I think you, in a number of properties and hectares, it'd be good, both are, both are important.
Yes.
I'll have to see if it's durable and maybe show we.
But I think that makes more, when you read that, that makes more of a hit on people. So, yeah, they've been really successful, it's actually got, you know, two hundred landholders to go from high risk to low risk.
Yep.
They've made up those properties and X number of hectares has been reduced.
Has been reduced, yeah.
Right, and it also shows that we're being in and out, we're also doing public authority, which is for an organisation like ours.
It's good. Sorry. Councillor Reynolds?
Um, Mr Chair, one question, quick question, I was a mover of this.
Oh, sorry, I apologize.
No, 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 I've got a question for this, are we referring, are we looking at, because of all these modifications? As in, are we agreeing to publish, but it's going to be modified afterwards, which shouldn't take place? I'm a little confused on what the eventual outcome of what McKibben has sort of said, so I'm seeking kind of a question, Mr Chair.
Let's have time frame, the annual report, what's in the statutory court. A tear here.
Oh, yeah, another lady before it's going to go out.
Feel like a full extra.
Councillor, I have to.
Yes, please.
I think that you, you passed the resolution with a clause saying that the acting general manager be authorised to, to make the appropriate changes as discussed at the meeting.
I'm happy with that.
Yeah, yeah, that's a solution. So the second, yeah, we have, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Member Lesley. And, GM, can I just get you to refer to Member McKibben and just, we'll make sure all the clarification is right. I made, the names are written on the names down, but I'd like to make sure we've got that clarified.
I'm very, you know, specific on this stuff, but I think it's, it's, there's nothing relations thing that shows.
Well, I think it's important, thank you, Member, isn't it, for that, Member Reynolds, sorry.
I've just got one, nothing directly to do with the annual report, but it was actually about councils, reporting the councils. Some councils will know, while other councils do, and I know in my council's case, I've done my report twice a year to my council, and I know as if with other members that more frequently, but Chris would just potentially suggest as a suggestion to the new county council, so the acting GM here in mind, that twice a year, a three page report is prepared that each of the councillors could take to their council on the performance of the county council, so the communication internally with the councils. When I spent a few times writing my report, taking it out of material, so I'm just looking at something to maybe improve communication of what I said in this discussion earlier for future councils, so that we can.
And Member Reynolds, would that be something that, you know, maybe snapshot on our financials, just on hectares, like what?
Every, every two months.
Every, twice, twice a year, so.
We do that, though. We go and snapshot the financials last one.
It's what I did, but I'm just suggesting, it's available and it makes my life, if I'm, it may not work, actually, but is it rather than me having to come and write a report myself on what's information provided.
So yeah, I'm just, you get members, we have to do something for them.
No, that's, that would be, no, that's something I think is a good idea. The fact also, the upper crime actually is now visiting and having meetings at our constituent councils. One that gives a chance to those councils, they can if they wish to, but also, I guess it cements a little bit more of what we're doing, I know John himself, we sort of have chats with people after meetings about what we've been up to and all that, not necessarily reports, but we sort of sit down and go through, through things at various times, I've heard John talking. So yeah, everyone does it a bit differently within the council, so yeah, look, members, you'll sort of come to a simple report to just a feedback and plus the visits to the membership councils at the end of the floor, and so you'll have it, no, thank you. Member Reynolds suggests something else?
No, that's it.
Any other thing, members, if there's not, all four with that amendment, against, Carrie, thank you. Councillor's item two. Income and expenditure adjustments.
This is QDR, is it?
This is to be noted. Where's the record actually, so? Someone over there? This is to be noted, these adjustments. Thank you, Julian.
And councillor Johnson.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, don't, yeah, so recommend that should be noted, yeah. Can I move her to second, just? In the ring? Member Lesley, any commentary councillors, members? No?
Which, which is this on the QDRs?
Income expenditure adjustments, item two.
Are you seven eight, I believe?
Yeah, well, item two, the accorded budget.
I'm right.
Yep.
Should this be spring two thousand twenty one, not spring two thousand twenty? And autumn twenty one, should this be autumn two thousand twenty two? And at a B addition twenty five K, should this be two thousand twenty one, not twenty? And I think I've had an explanation from the acting general manager about the sales of chemical up to forty K and expenditure for forty K. There's no profit, but that's because of the increase in, in chemical costs, so that actually, although we sold forty K, had a profit when we went out to buy new stuff to replace it, we actually had to pay more for it, so when we sell that all, we should get more, we should get about fifty five. We had fifteen percent. Okay, so, and then I do have some issues in the QDRs, but I'll allow councillor Reynolds to go first, because I've got to go back.
I'm already, yes. Yes, sorry, I'm.
You have, have questions? Member McKibben, do you?
I do, but I'm trying to find.
Oh, I'll ask my question, and give a brief answer. Yeah, the last council meeting, we discussed resourcing. I was wondering if the general manager could give us a brief update of resourcing of, given that she is acting in the campaign as well, and partially performing her role, as in how we're looking at resourcing this until the new county council, council.
Thank you, Jim, please.
So briefly, I, the person that I did have in mind from a previous recruitment panel, unfortunately, she has another job to do.
Sorry.
That's council. Um, so unfortunately, that has fallen through. So in the meantime, using the funds, uh, the thirty thousand dollars that you're seeing D, um, I intend to use it to outsource a lot of my industry role. Things like, um, preparing the financial statements, answering the phones, you can get answering services or VoIP. Um, and asking what it stands for.
Voice over, yeah, protocol.
That one, uh, which will be set up so that the staff can assist in answering phone calls. Um, so I'm, I'm starting to outsource a lot of those minor things that I can get on what really matters. So just at this, just at this stage, at this stage.
It's Jim.
Thank you. Member McKinnon?
All right, so I think I, if we could go to table one, QDRs, please. It's giving life, life, I'm sorry. Do you know what to say?
I think not, Jim, it's.
That's right. I handed on the flight notice, and I checked, you know, to take it off the flight notice. All right, so.
Okay, first table.
Landhold support program, I take the, um, adjustment a hundred and ten thousand was the aerial programs, correct? Um, and the annual expenses, same. Um. We've got the adjustments up for the roadside weed control program, twenty thousand, is that the roll over from the previous year?
Yes.
And the fifty-five and the thirty, similarly?
Yes.
Okay, that explains it all. Then on table two. It's regular, I'm reading this incorrectly. If we have operating funds, the original budget was four hundred and sixteen thousand, unrestricted. And revised budget is four hundred and sixteen thousand. And we've had an adjustment down of sixty thousand. So the projected end of the year is three hundred and fifty-six thousand, and we have an actual year-to-date of nine hundred and three thousand. Mr. Junior? No, I'm sure. It doesn't make sense to me. Because the actual year-to-date has to be lower than where the first quarter, I'm assuming it could be ninety thousand, but.
I think it happens.
Ninety thousand, but it can't be nine hundred and three thousand. I'm surprised the council committee didn't think this way. Just.
I think I know what the answer is.
Well, we, we, we can't, I don't think, well, do you think it's correct or an error?
I think it's correct, but, um.
Based on what? Can you give us an explanation?
Well, I, I think, I think what it actually is, is what we've actually really received and what we've actually really got there. So keep in mind that there was a resolution of council to keep nine hundred or so thousand funds aside, we remember that, yeah? I think that that's what it's referring to.
But when that, that has to change, an adjustment up of nine hundred thousand.
I'll have to come back to that.
Because we can't, we, yeah, it, 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 there has to be an adjustment up. Or something. It just doesn't. You're taking on that.
Yep.
Um, but we don't, we have to publish.
Have to be, I, I, sorry?
Is, we published this QDR, so I really don't want to go on public exhibition to at least put it up.
Problem is, that's the chairman.
Hmm, yeah.
Because we go in care, take a vote, and this is a final document that we.
That you take.
Because we're making decisions here about changes, so we have to make a decision today, so we have.
So can I go on special purpose grants? So the original budget was forty-four thousand.
So, sorry, I think I might have it, so nine hundred and three thousand plus your four hundred and sixteen, we're talking about cash, actual cash.
Yeah, cash and investments.
Yeah, actual cash that we have, actual, like, it's sitting in the bank right now, cash.
So why isn't allowed for in the original budget and revised budget? Because it's sitting on the bank. So it should.
No, we're talking about the budget. I think it's the terminology that's used.
Yeah, and the actual year-to-date is nine hundred and three thousand. So why wouldn't the original budget have included that cash?
So it must be an error then.
Well, I'm not sure, can we go down to special purpose grants? We've got forty-four thousand is the original budget, we have a revised budget, forty-four thousand, then we've had an adjustment of forty-three thou- forty-four thousand down. So the actual, so if there's been so then we have a projected end of year of zero. Yet the actual year-to-date is forty-four thousand.
Hmm, that one needs to do with the book, do you remember the L S book that we agreed, um, to um, organize with, along with the L S to move on the cash, the forty-four thousand? So we started off with the forty-four thousand, so that's what we actually have, we have the actual cash of forty-four thousand sitting there. And by Christmas time, we expect it to go, so the adjustment will be less forty-four thousand. So by the end of the year, the projected position at the end of the year will be zero. But at the moment, it's actually forty-four thousand in cash.
Still forty-four thousand, yeah.
Yes, yeah, that the projection is of the adjustment will be to spend that forty-four thousand on that book. I'm pretty sure it relates to the financial statements.
So it's recommended adjustment there will be forty-four thousand, which eventually, once it's, once it's used, then.
On that book.
On that book, but it will go over zero figure.
Book, and that's the projected end year result.
I have an answer, hopefully you're unrestricted, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
Totally, I'll solve everything. So from my understanding of reading this here, we have nine hundred and three thousand dollars unrestricted cash at the end of the September quarter, sitting in our bank account. That included money from our county council, from our constituent councils, maybe WAP funding, I'm not sure. However, at the end of the financial year, we were originally projecting we would have unrestricted of four hundred and sixteen thousand. We've now made an adjustment, we, we believe our unrestricted spend dropped by sixty thousand. So at the end of the financial year, we'll have three hundred and fifty-six thousand projected, uh, unrestricted cash plus eight hundred and two thousand restricted cash, leading to one million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in cash reserves at the end of the financial year. On this current QDRS adjustment, and that sixty thousand is the adjustment down. So we weren't going to have two, or one million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand originally, at the end of the financial year. And now projected have one million, one over fifty-eight.
Yes, yeah.
But you've got to, you've got to, you've got to then have separate lives for restricted and unrestricted.
Which is.
The top one's unrestricted, as well as restricted.
Yeah, right, okay.
Extremely restricted, internal.
We'll still count back and the clarification.
We'll be still.
Still, yeah, it doesn't.
It doesn't still gel?
It does.
Minus hundred percent variation.
That's how much we've got in the bank at the moment. That's how much we're projected to have, so we're going to have six hundred thousand less, or one hundred and fifty thousand less, Mr. Chair. And the bank account at the end of our financial year, on what's currently there, because we've already got the funding for the councils. It's sitting there.
It's sitting there.
Using actual action.
Now, because, so you go, if you go from anything to zero, it's minus a hundred percent.
Yes.
Yes.
So that's the point.
And the very last call is, is what you've got. Now I've got it all.
Yeah, that's it, yeah. Putting that into words.
All I'm using is a version.
Members, any other?
So the original budget, um, under operating funds of four hundred and sixteen, doesn't take account of our current cash reserves.
And that's the amount of money that we will be left, Mr. Chair, at the end of the financial.
At the end.
At the end of the financial.
It's, the projected will be left, we've changed, we've lowered that by sixty thousand.
Projected end of the year drops by sixty, but we started at.
On the end of the first quarter, it's nine hundred and three thousand, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, members. Any other question, members?
No, I think that doesn't.
Yep. Yes, recommendation, they all fall. Mr. Chair, thank you, members. One and three, strong investments referred to June twenty twenty-one. Recommendation, income mover, second, please. Member Reynolds, Member McKinnon. Any commentary councillors? Member Reynolds, yeah?
I've just got to make some commentary.
Yeah.
It's a very good position to be in, cash-wise. Uh, I don't think, it's my history that this organisation is, has no money to cash the bank. Uh, I don't know, all my member, a lot of serving members can recall any more of it, it's a good position to be in. And I hope, uh, that during the year that we actually can step up and maybe bring it back down towards, say, one and a half million on what three is the projection there, uh, rather than sort of continuing to build. But I think it's a good platform to have, being in plus doubles in cash. Uh, but hopefully we aim to use, utilize more to do more weed control work, rather than continuing to build our finances forever again.
Yeah. Um, Kim, sorry.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, this era might be relative, I, I know the acting general manager provides some of the synopsis of extra support. Um. And I know the chief words office is not here, but currently, we feel we have sufficient inspection resources on staff to be able to cope with the current um, workload. Um, envisaging an autumn sprouting program, I know we brought someone on to assist with aerial programs. Um, that person, like, is capable of being engaged to do a full time at the moment.
To every part-time.
At the time, uh, so we think with our current resources and that person, today, telling full I'm saying this now because this is probably the last meaningful council of, of UNCC meetings for an election, or the new members next year. Um, that we would have, we will have sufficient resources to be able to cater for that aerial program in autumn next year. Or do you think additional, and, and further additional resources are there, apart from the person we are trying to get on to do some administrative stuff?
In terms of human resources, it seems to be travelling smoothly at this stage. In terms of preparing, so we've been preparing since the last one ended. So always moving towards the next program. And pandemic years did prevent us from seeing landholders, which did make it more difficult to do the administrative tasks leading up to the aerial program. However, kicking to gear up, we are able to, to see the landholders and actually attend their places and, and help them. Um, so I think, I feel like it's heading in the right direction. I think that the person that we've employed has been of great assistance. And, and not only for the aerial program, so his, the latest, uh, resourcing of task force for cropan A. He's assisted huge, hugely, something that I've really been grateful for, having him there to help with. So, and that net monitoring a program with limited task force, he's been able to keep on top of and make sure that everything was used towards this game. So I feel like it's heading in the right direction. Um. I can't foresee the future, but I think it's heading in the right direction. I, I think it should be progress.
And, um, I suppose for appropriate lighting, all right, now, because on the topic. Um. The predominant spraying activities in autumn will be blackberry. And do we have sufficient chemicals to be able to undertake that program?
Mr. Junior?
Is that the first part of statement or a question?
Question.
So in terms of chemicals for blackberry, uh, yes, we have sufficient chemicals. Uh, but at the moment, we've been moving across all of our serrated toxic customers and haven't seen a spike yet in blackberry, interestingly.
But so what you're saying is, is that some of the serrated toxic will be managed much well.
Uh, the majority of it so far, so that the customers have expressed interest, the majority of them are serrated toxic customers.
So we're hopeful we will have sufficient uh, amounts of task force.
We've been, we've been managing our stocks accordingly.
So we will have sufficient.
So, so no cloud, so we'll have enough product, or we can do.
We're matching the customers to the product.
Okay.
We have a set amount of product, that's how many customers we can get.
Can we get more product if we're going to more customers?
We're trying, but I doubt it.
For March, I know.
March, we're already in the air. And to have already booked people in, required deposit taking, mapping and locking those people in takes time. So if you're already in the air and you're trying to do that at the same time, it makes it very difficult and complications and errors arise when you try and do that all at once, it's impossible.
So I also envisage, maybe wrongly, but with the season, that we probably don't have a lot of people making the point of blackberries.
We are expecting a spike.
And so, uh, the question, I suppose, is, um, do we feel that we currently have or can obtain sufficient quantities of graysol, uh, and, uh, wells to be able to make the expected spike?
I, I, we are used to the biopsychology operations manager, and he has assured me that we have to use chemists from the aerial strain.
Yeah.
That the appropriate chemicals for aerial strain of blackberry are fine to, to obtain. Yeah.
Thank you.
Not, not a problem, that's appropriate.
So if, if we were to get to February, then we needed further additional resources, because we have a huge uptake in our aerial programs. Um, do we have someone we can call if we need?
Complaint, thank you.
I think so. I think so.
Can you imagine that, where you see that might be found? Is that from another research area?
No, it was from local recommendations about some people that might be available on a casual basis. In which we wouldn't need to run a recruitment panel as such. It wouldn't take as much effort to employ them for such specific tasks that can be easily trained in.
Yeah, okay, now that's, that's, that's my question, thank you.
Member Reynolds?
Uh, just a, a quick question on the amount of money, uh, and update potentially on capital-wise, we agreed to manage two units at the last county council meeting. Um, have we paid for those units yet, or is there an update on the potential delivery? If I asked the question at the time, about the market, it was totally, we're available at the time.
To you?
By the time we got back to the, um, they sold them on us, they, they, they did keep them and we took too long um, because we had to wait for this process to occur, so the units, we were expecting to collect, um, the sold and we were told something like January, February, that they could be coming in.
And included, well.
No, 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 they, they, they're at the, um, tender price, yeah, no change.
What was the council, Reynolds?
Ford Ranger XLs.
XLs.
Just XLs, just an XL.
So, Mr. Chair, we have, we haven't paid them back yet.
No, we have not, sorry, yes, no, we haven't.
If you could, if something changes, but, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm looking at my, my, can't forget.
So supplemental, Mr. Chair, from our units, as in, have we made the contingency to make sure that the units that we're going to trade in are able to live till February, so that, uh, they're still in comfortable, safe condition till February?
Mr. Jim, but I would think first, I had to work out from safety, our maintenance program, the answer has to be yes, because I'm not going to have staff go out if they are not in the vehicle, so you'll be making sure that's adhered to?
Yeah.
Please, thank you. So, yes.
Close it.
I'm working for another source for some wages too. That's not local. Um, any other questions, members? No? Um, all four? Against Karen, thank you. Item four, roadside weed control program two, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, recommendation, move. Recommendation, remove the second account, members. And bring, and Kim, any?
Yeah, I have a question with the first sentence in background.
Sorry.
The first sentence in the, stop any background.
Yep.
That's misleading. I know, I know what David Jones told us, that we have no landholder biosecurity details for roads. I just think that's a misleading statement. We better off if it's starting with public authorities.
How, how do you want to word it? Sorry, you're not happy with it?
I understand the first sentence necessary.
So you're saying the county councillors, the local control authority for weed biology has no landholder biosecurity duties? You disagree with that?
I don't agree with that at all. Theoretically, it's right, so that's a name of young hope. But the first, I think it's just better left out. It's paramount for staff.
Thank you.
We're helping authorities. Landholder biosecurity.
Biosecurity duties. So these are, we're not landholder.
Yeah.
We're not a landholder. Sorry. We're not a landholder. We're not landholders, no.
Councillors are.
Yeah, okay, so you're pointing. But indirectly, as someone just said in, councils are, which is our constituent councils, the landholders.
That's right.
And because we are, I would think, because we are an authority based under, I guess it's under legislation to be a weeds authority with constituent councils, and the landholders, in essence, we are landholders because we are representatives of our councils.
Shoving the word direct after the R, we've got to cover. Direct, yeah. Do we need to debate the background? Bring the figures of the background statement. We talk about representation, surely. And we propose.
There is, there is a comment.
That word, that first sentence is misleading. The person from the public saw that, let's have a look on what are you doing?
But the person from the public is, has already seen it, if he's interested. Once the minutes come out, it's not there.
But do you agree with that, you, the first sentence?
No, no, I don't. That's not the point on mainly, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be wasting time discussing the first part of the background statement.
Councillors, um. The question has been asked that a councillor has an issue with the first statement. It's been stated it has no direct landholder biosecurity duties by that wording. I can, I just get a feel from the other councillors. I understand councillor Caples just made a comment. Any other councillors, do you see it? This, if it has to be, but, um. We changed that word in here, we can do that quite, quite easily up within recommendations itself. Do people see that simple word being added, no direct?
Yeah.
Have I got an agreement on that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so can you just add that wording, please? We have a recommendation there, councillors, a member, sorry. Member, Kim.
Yeah, I've, I've read a couple of comments on the appendix. Appendix four, in section B. My question is, if sticky nightshade is only to be reported and not treated initially, and has no known treatment registered for the APBMA, then how is it? We're using an off-label treatment at the moment. Are we applying to, as I asked last time, are we applying to APBMA to get it actually registered? Or someone applies to the APBMA to get it registered for sticky nightshade?
Thank you, Jim.
Yes, sure. So I think there might be two parts to your question there. So I take the first question as, um. Not, not for initial treatment, that's, that was the concern. So with these particular weeds, I believe that the prehuded matter, so it steps them up in a grade and we want to capture where they are. So rather than them just being annihilated and never knowing where they are, we want them reported first to the the weeds vice credit officer or the chief weeds officer, so that they can be mapped and so that we can monitor the spread. So rather than just, unlike, unlike, which is everywhere, we want to know specifically if things are found. We want to know where they are first before they're killed.
Okay, so it, it may be appropriate then to find that in there that because these, these weeds are used in the aerial that it is important that these be properly mapped by UNCC in order to prevent further spreading or something to that effect. And then I think you need to say they will be treated because at the moment, all that looks as obvious, they're going to be reported. Doesn't say anything about treating them. Spray them.
Thank you, Jim.
So, um. I suppose there's, yes, in the weed reporting schedule, in the weed reporting schedule, that's what it's saying. Because it's the reporting of these particular weeds in this particular section. So they're saying report on these weeds specifically. I think you're right, you could add another paragraph to say what happens next. Are they reported? Just for clarity.
Because the first section, when we're talking about all the chili and needle grass and blackberries surrounding the plastic, it says sprays, spray or whatever.
Yes.
Then we talk about these being reported, but does it all you do?
Is there a secondary part to it?
Well, I suppose that's all we want the public to do. We don't want them to kill it without us knowing.
So once they've reported it to us, are we going to kill it or are they going to kill it?
That's right. And so, but once they're reported to us, we could explain further. But I do agree, I think another paragraph in there.
And then we will give, then we will give direction.
On, on for the, for the herdside control, that's the question.
The problem, the fun of the problem is we don't have anything actually registered to kill sticky nightshade. That's the third kind of question.
So on, on that, the APBMA has permits on certain, certain chemicals for sticky nightshade. Now, those permits have been run out next year. I believe the regional weeds committee are looking to request that they extend that. But I believe at the last council meeting, we agreed that we would write or support the region.
Process, yep.
To, to help that process along to say, yes, we agree, you should commit.
And how do we get it on the label? That'd be even better.
Yes, I believe that's an even more extenuating.
So can we convince the chemical companies further? If one does it, then it follows suit, the rest will be up to the area if you may. Is, is they going to make application? The chemical companies have to make, is a chemical companies make application normally for their labels?
Yes.
Yeah. Do we speak to Kenzo or one of them or say?
So ask some questions?
Yeah, I'd also be writing Kenzo to ask if they could upgrade the label to include sticky nightshade.
They'd be under regulatory authority, that would allow them to put that on there and not them. To firmly put it on there, they would have to have authority to have that on there.
We write to Kenzo.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, whatever produces.
Yep.
And say, we will support your application to AP in that, in that.
Yeah.
Appropriate treatment for sticky nightshade on the label. Could you please make the application? And do we, let that feel appropriate.
Yeah, we just show why we support the application in the digital process.
With, because we have, we, I think what we have to say is we're going to be increasing this stuff in our area and in surrounding areas, that's in Cabon as well, isn't it? Really? And. And we, it's becoming an increasing problem. It would have been disgraceful if you would make application to have the label stamped in the process. Is there a response?
Yep. You're happy to do that, Mr Jay? So later, ask, asking the question, that's all we're asking, as we said, we support the process, asking the question.
It'd make it easy for everyone if you love like, having your new permits every, or how long?
Uh, depends what they're being applied for.
But as long as you've got a couple of permits, they're easy to get on your label, that proves.
If, if.
You don't like. It's got a bunch of trials.
Yes, my understanding is that it's very, very, very expensive to alter your label or even make application for a label. So organisations, businesses that have chemicals go through a lot to have a permit and it costs a lot of money. So I'm not really sure about the process, but I could ask a question.
Okay. We could do that.
I mean, I, I can suggest just a couple of other things, like include on their label, like, which I'm having a problem with.
The last question, remember?
Okay. I've got a few others, which you may possibly.
I was just going to congratulate the amount of roadside that we're looking at doing. By local LGA, it's approximately one third of all the roads outside of the villages throughout, also in the highways, the local road. So we're getting across now, because we've done such a major campaign over the last four years, a lot more country, a lot more roads than what we're looking at only a couple of years ago. So which is good that we're getting on to weeds while they're small, which again is cheaper, which is less chemical, to spray a small weed. And we're getting into a rotation. So I suppose, and I have alerted the actual general manager to one road that's partially caboned. So it will be, there will be an adjustment. I'll also ask for the reduction to be potentially another road. But are, are we looking, my LGA is Blangshire, that's sort of like a three year rotation now? Is this, is this where we're aiming for? Or is it, do we have a set amount of time before we come back? Or are we looking at, if we see a St John's ward outbreak in a particular area or roads, that will re-allocate the sources, maybe not quite get to all of these roads? Or is there a strategy on going forward on a roadside control project?
Thank you, Jim.
So I have some advice from the biosecurity operations manager about this. And just whilst he's not here, I'm very odd that he answers this question. But the advice that I received from Kim was that as the roads are inspected, they are prioritised just like private land use. So they're given a risk rating of one to four. And so that helps us prioritise them in the list to be done. So depending, so it's hard to say whether or not the funds that we've allocated from your constituent councils that you pay for us to how far, because, well, a four in one case of a seventy K long road compared to a four of a one K road can be very different. But that is the strategy going forward is that as they become less and less, in saying that though, we do want to still reach those roads that are a lower risk because the longer you keep them clean or the better that you keep them clean, it means less work later. So.
That means that's great for the local mode?
That's right. Yeah, that's exactly right. And that's, and that's part of the clue for us when we do private property inspections. What does the road look like? So we, we do take that into consideration as well, whether or not the road is high risk right next to it. You know, a property that's inundated or not. So yes, there is a, a process going forward in terms of making sure that they're prioritised. Way, that's not to say that we won't keep roads that are less risky.
Kim.
I've got several questions. In section D, it does state delivery timing of the programmes on a devotised control limits that will put a tag where you plan a season in the current season. I know this is commended first to December. I suggest by that stage you might have some jobs were already seen, so I'm careful. So I'm still there.
So what we have tried to do is here is some of the team members, staff, they have been given the go ahead to go out and hit roads that do have St John's ward. The trickiest part for us, I suppose, was to determine whether or not we want to do two runs along the road, particularly if it has both blackberry and ward.
Can I say one point?
Yep.
I found this year that my blackberries have sufficient foliage on them at this time of year. That I have actually, you know, the chemicals have been working very effectively because they're fully, pretty well fully loaded up at the moment. I know the optimum time, maybe some is in autumn because the sap's coming back. But that's after our programme goes anyway. I think you'll find that with the leaf up of the blackberries this year, you could probably go early. Because I'm amazed, they're dying really quickly. I, I had to do some running and there was blackberries in parts of it and the blackberries just all over and dry, but because they're not, they're sitting down, you know, because of the wet season, there, there, there's no stress on them, so they're taking the chemicals. But that's just an observation on the, I'm saying I don't think you'd have to go twice in what I'm saying. If I could, then thank you. In a, what is it, in H. Evolving weed in invested areas where frequently could expose the site to serious erosion will not be treated. Instead, such sites will refer to local council sites for a coordinated holistic solution. We have to give an example of where that's at.
Um, we have one in projects at the moment, it'll probably be the first one that they've embarked on.
Okay.
It's close, Lithgo, Tarnar?
Yeah.
These are fire ships apparently. So again, I saw advice from. Not sure exactly, but he was saying that if they were to spray the side of the road, you'd have, you'd have erosion straight up and you'd be detrimental. But it'd be, it'd be silly to do that. And so he is being in contact with the Lithgo and just, yeah, what the city council, but I know it's me.
Okay, all right. And if I could, under section A, which lists the roads.
Yeah.
I noticed under that, this Turin Road is mentioned twice, is this correct?
Yeah.
I noticed Primeval Flood Road is not mentioned, but last year it had a significant infestation of St John's ward. Fairly solid all the way along. I think the chief biosecurity officer will recall that. And said somewhere, I don't know whether it's too early to follow up, I don't know, but I was imagining we probably didn't get it all in my kit. Anyway, maybe that's a trial.
Take another comment.
So it's not, it's not listed on the vision form, so I remember reading David, sort of the general manager at the time and, and saying someone went out and they said, you're absolutely right, it's, it's John's ward. Yeah, please.
Again, the chief weeds officer can write that comment from the early questions and he said it was sprayed in leaves last year.
Yeah, it was. Does that mean we got it all? It was pretty thick. I don't know, mate. I'm not saying we don't, or maybe it just was any sort of check.
Check it out.
Check it when, when you can start seeing the flower and seeing it's bad. That's all I'm saying. I'm, I'm not saying it's necessary, probably I should have said.
Yeah, truly noted, that would be.
Under Blaney, I think Newbridge Road is mentioned twice for their employers. I'm assuming that's a double up. Cool, the road's not mentioned. Well, I'll take more interest in it, but I travel down it next, because I travel down it a lot and I'll I'll get the acting general manager to, I think, I know it was done last year and it may have had it good enough, it may have, may like another year, I can't remember. I know there's some pity, but you're right, sometimes hard to say what a blackberry.
Newbridge Road's four hundred and four hundred and one, says your office. So it's like, uh, it must have moved along.
I don't know.
It's all just last question.
The roadside control programme, that's twenty one, twenty two for Baptist, now there's a twenty twenty one. Is that a part of your?
Yeah. Yeah. And then under Lithgo, and I, I think you've explained this, you've said if the budget's reduced by twenty K, we're still going to do three hundred and twenty four kilometres going to be sprayed. And I think the acting general manager said to me, yes, because they carry out it from last year, is that right? No?
No, that's, that's a bit different. So the twenty thousand, sorry, previous.
You're right.
So the twenty thousand dollars brought over from the previous year will be proportionally distributed amongst the four different council areas.
But Lithgo's cut the, so does that mean the twenty, they, we're still going to do three twenty four kilometres in Lithgo or that amount will be reduced because they've reduced their contribution by twenty thousand?
This list is only, it's a wish list. If we can get through all of it with the funds that we have for all four council councils, like for each in their own area, then that's great. I don't know if we will be able to get through it or not. That, and that goes for all of them. I don't.
So, so we'd expect in February for a report to come back saying how much is?
Yeah, yes, that's right. Yes, yeah.
All right, okay. I think, I think, um. Maybe that needs to be explained that because actually, I read a thing, these are going to be done. Not this is the wish list, or this is what we hope to get done. Maybe we just say, with available funds, with the available funds, we will report back to council in February. Is that what it says? Um, report it back to council in February. Is that what it says?
Insofar as.
Insofar as our resources are met. But then I think you need to say, we'll report it back to February in a ten step, uh, to, to what, what is, what the available funds have allowed us to do. And which, which roads have not been able to, uh, finish the labour.
I like that one. Just not all members, Lee.
I, I hope as a Lithgo councillor that if, uh, it's discovered that some section of the roads, uh, road sites are not done as well as they should be. Uh, or because of a reduction in funding, that, uh, our general manager is informed of the fact that there are, there are. There are aspects of the roads that, that weren't done as well because, because of the budget costs. So, then we, we point out the consequences of the reduction of funding to the council's general manager. Who then has, who then has the, you know, the responsibility to advise council or us in, in, in any budget review that council does.
Acton Jane?
So, just in response to that, I know that the previous general manager, David, he, when it was agreed or arranged to take a reduced amount in terms of roadside. The general biosecurity direction was reiterated, it said, it was stated that, okay, you're going to reduce it, but you still need to meet your biosecurity duty. It may not have an impact this year, but if you continue to keep it at a reduced amount, you may not continue to meet your biosecurity duty. And the general biosecurity direction has been placed on roads in this area. So, in terms of, uh, reducing the amount, the quality of spraying will not reduce. It will be the amount of roads that will be reduced. So it has actually already been discussed with, with every person at the council.
I, I, I like that, the, the gen- the general, um, statement of consequences is, is correct. I think we need to just keep in mind the specific consequences of the reduced funding, which relates specifically to. Whether the, the problems they, they, you know, the staff made, so.
Yep. Kim? Any else members?
I was just, um, sorry, number five, was it? I'm, I'm, we have an answer to the, um. Along my road, there's, there's two, one where there's strips of vegetation sprayed. But that's a good prediction, what we understand, the council just sprays the grass. So that's, that's roadside spraying, we're calling Bathurst Council. So, we have a corridor spraying out.
Yes, so the people.
We don't roadside spray. So there's council, with Bathurst Council.
Yeah, they, they, the bike goes along the spray outside his window, it does, does not, from the pitch, move for about a metre.
Which I think is a big plus for us, I think you can just slash it, anyway. I don't know why we do that. Um, so that is what I thought was roadside spraying.
Ah, this is what's right.
And I got confused last year, because the contract at the time, we had been roadside spraying, and I thought it'd been spot spraying or blackberry. No, that was, so I understand.
I thought you did a thing.
Yes.
Um, and it started by contractors, but if they have, so I assume I would, I'll use councils.
Yeah, I would use councils.
There are councils that actually have to slash the grass and that's why, which is a bit wrong in that, but that's on some councils.
Except if it's a Chilean male grass or African love grass, it gets spread on lots of, lots of slashing the earth, that's a problem. Good, 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 good grass, it's, it's fine, much better idea, but if you get.
Further out west, they splash all the time. They, they've done it the same way as us.
And the Chilean, yes, cool type grass, it's spread away in the north west part, council slashes.
The roads are, it's, it, they, 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 but, but.
You know.
All right, yes, the PK members, um, member Reynolds, member Reynolds, first, continue the question.
Mr Chair, I was just going to make a suggestion to the next county council again. At the February meeting or whenever the next county council meeting is, with regard to roadside, if we do exhaust funds, that whether, you know, all areas, that whether council may. Recommendation could come to the next council, so I'm not, I'm not sure, I don't get it, but, um, I agree. But if there isn't a need for extra funds, if we do have a bad week here or pull up, say, okay, well, our reserves will take. Ten thousand, twenty thousand from each county, uh, each council, constituent council to do further work, because it's, because there's plenty of time at the top. But I'm still saying that staff will potentially bring to the next county council meeting, so the new county council. Uh, if it looks as though we, okay, you're not short, but we do have weed problems on a number of roads. And that could well be bringing forward next year's weed funding, so proportionate next year's weed funding. Uh, from the constituent councils to, to actually get on top of weeds now rather than, so, so I just preventative measures if there is a need. But it may not be a need, but I was just at the start, if there was a possibility, it's county councils.
Yep, okay. Then with the given.
Uh, thank you. Um, I noticed in the listing of the roads, um, we've got for some of them. It's a state forestry, I'm assuming that's what it is. For instance, Dog Rock Road. It's got six kilometres on Bathurst, sorry, and it's got BX, oh, BX, no, partners, Bathurst, Bathurst, Stone Rock, and SF in Brax. So, I suppose what, what I'm interested also to see is. And, um. Uh, they're capable and I, one of our dog rocks road, and the vicinity of the dog rock state forest. And this concept that we have with forestry of spraying from the edge of the road. And you're not just weeds, blackberries in particular, right through to the ancient pines, you know, the, the understanding we've got with forestry. So, um, I'm assuming that's a dog rocks road, that's what we're, would be direct. If we were carries where we, we have a, we have a road, we have the road curving, we have a fence, and then we have the, the pines. We're going to be spraying all the way through the forest, uh, under our understanding with forestry, is that correct?
Oh, that's a question. Sorry, I thought that was a statement. Yes, that's correct.
That is correct. Right. So I think what's going to be interesting is, um, are we doing that on all roads where we have. State forest adjoining a road that was spraying here?
Acton Jane, do you know it?
So just this week past, we met with forestry to discuss what plans we have for their roads. And, and the forests that are on them. Um, I believe that the list was after this, so we've got more roads of forestry to do. Now, the chairman might be aware as well, Sunny Corner is a particular one that is, uh, quite bad. And I know that there are a few roads, um, that, that really caught our attention. So we've priorit, we've helped to prioritise them in terms of, there's still need to issue a weed control notice, so that they have. The right means to direct their budget towards this area. So without sort of telling them or directing them to do it, you know, just giving them a list isn't good enough. So we, we map it, we give them weed control notice, we give it a risk rating. So we help them prioritise the roads through their forest. Face a number of things, so observations and complaints, particularly with, with sunny corner, it's quite a big problem. And so, we this week have discussed with forestry, um, those roads. So there's more, more roads for forestry that would go towards this list.
But absolutely, and that's, and that's excellent. But. The, and I understood, we come to a understanding with forestry. That where we were doing something like Dog Rock Road, and in front of the forestry. That rather than they send their contractor down to do inside the fence, and us do outside the fence, the running.
Yes.
We were going to do one contractor.
Yes.
And then we're going to reimburse us for the cost.
Yes.
So that if, you know, I don't know, four metres from the centre of the road, or from the edge of the road to the fence, and then it's four metres to the front, the front. We're going to split the cost fifty-fifty, we turn our contractor down, they reimburse.
Yes, 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 it is.
And, and I'm just asked, wondering, has that been, with this, with this list of roads, and I'm talking in particular about this, this study for us here. With this list of roads, have we said to forestry, okay, on these roads, we believe of the. Use as an example, Dog Rock Road, we've got six kilometres there at Bathurst, so, um, sure, yeah, it's all right, six, six. There is, I'm about to get involved, let's say, three kilometres. Or, no, Dog Rock Road's not bad, it's a bad road, but say Dog Rock Road is an overall, and it probably is, I can't remember the name of it there. Saying, uh, yes, Dog Rock Road, twenty-five kilometres, that's right. So I mean, say, they're saying eight kilometres back. In front of forestry. Right, so for that eight kilometres, are you going to, pardon you, are we going to do this sharing arrangement? And you're going to pay fifty-six? We don't have a discussion, do we have that?
I believe, I believe that that's what you're planning this week.
Okay, and so, when we send our contractor down, and I've gone, you know, out of our, I've done our occasion, and I'm, I'm just picking out those examples. Because Bathurst and Lithgo obviously have a lot of, Lithgo, we, it's forestry. We're saying, okay, so where we might be spending, um, so that the cost for us will not be the twenty-five kilometres. It will, it will be, well, it could be twenty-five kilometres, but forestry will be sharing the cost to go to the pines, as you can say, as kilometers, as an example.
Yeah.
Okay, so, what I think would be good, again in February, is when we do this review. As Reynolds was talking about, saying, and in addition, this list of roads, we had a shared cost with forestry. They've contributed next to that, because on, under the sharing programme, where we agreed to share from, uh, to just spray from the side of the road, right to the edge of the path, please.
Yes.
And that was the understanding we had with them, wasn't it?
Yes, the tricky part when it's, when it comes to fenced and unfenced, but.
I know that, but there's, and, and one of the reasons I used the Dog Rock Road, um, um. There are a couple of other roads, is because it is fenced.
Yeah, but every guy eventually will have a, have a percentage agreement.
Agreement to have.
Which, which, and that percentage agreement, well, that clearly won't change over time, so once it's done, once it's, it's just, it's irreparable. Uh, and then you, you do the roads and you, you work out the percentage and send them the bills?
Because, you know, I was.
If they don't, if, sorry, if they don't like it, they get the percentage the first time, that's it, that's their opportunity to come to their own measurements and. You know, work out your negotiations afterwards, but if they accept it, well, bang.
Because I was driving, um, down Campbell's River Road the other day, and we've done a pretty good job of cleaning the road up. But inside the fence, you've got blackberries all the way, and they're just going to spread over the fence. So, obviously, the next time we do Campbell's River Road, we need to ensure that that agreement is in place. Because otherwise, it's, as we've discussed before, it's an ever-ending battle. You can spray the fence, but the fence doesn't come spraying through it through.
And it's, it's getting through to the authorities.
So I think it could be colours in place. For people like, um. You know, there's a pile of files and everything, it's going to make a significant, you know, if we can say, and, and they can see visually that. Rather than this spraying, just the fence is sprayed all the way, and we're actually highlighting blackberries all through that portal. I think, you know, it's going to be visually there, and we'll have the facts that they're actually contributing to doing that.
Yep.
And it's not, it's only, yeah, a couple of percent, you know, my distance in it, it's not. Ten, ten, four percent, maybe, okay, for that, so, speaker of the hour, yeah, maybe, um, there's five figures, I won't forget.
Ben, is there any other commentary? If it's not, all false. Yes, thank you. My comment.
I'm pleased.
Sorry. Yeah, that's what I was. Councillors, um, we're going to go confidential committee, can I have a motion, maybe, and, member Reynolds, member four, or four, against Gary. Five, five. I'm sorry.
General.
Okay, so. The main is the one that. This is what I mean. Yeah. Okay, if you see that change. What I mean, I'm so sorry.
It's not your fault.
See, I've still got recording paused. I can edit, I can edit this through there, and I'm allowed to edit it.
Yeah, I don't remember most, I think it was on the properties.
Want to talk to us about it?
Yeah.
We just, we just accept that to come in open, yes. And it's not on, so, in the. And as, according to now. Thank you, General Manager, giving the recognations from the confidential committee.
Council notes to be best to be registered, private property report for thirty September twenty twenty-one.
Could I have a motion, document, recommendations, recommendations of confidential committee, that's member McKinnon, and the cable, all four, yes, carry. Can I have a motion to recommendations of the committee behold council, be adopted, please? Member Reynolds, member McKinnon, all four. It's clear, I declare the meeting closed. And, um, for, I think, that we put a resolution in the next meeting?
Oh, I, I'd like to be, we, we thank those councils that are retiring.
Yes, I think we should.
Can we all, yeah, well, we are all retiring, but in particular, two councils who.
It was definitely, I don't say.
I'm close to being.
Quite close to being.
As in privately.
Yes.
To, because I think it's, I'm, I'm, I guess that, but a formality, you're up running again, so.